Let's call this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. Seeing no one else recording the meeting, if you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. I do not see any citizens to comment. Sure.
Hi, I'm Karen Holloway. I'm ABA Vice President, and I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that helped this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, getting teachers' test kits and masks. We really appreciate it. We know that that is not how anybody in our district planned to spend New Year's Day, hunting down test kits and masks for us, but they did, so we are really appreciative. Thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words, and please relay on to the staff that we appreciate all the work they're doing and being in the trenches and always looking out for our kids and doing what's best, and we appreciate everything that they do. And you do. Any other comments? Thank you.
That was refreshing. Thank you.
Yeah, that was nice. I was just saying earlier that sometimes we're not appreciated. Not that I'm looking for a pat on the back, but it is nice. It felt good. Thank you. So, I don't see any special recognitions listed here at the hand field, so we don't have any?
Nope. We have Jasmine with us.
We do? Alright. We have Mrs. Holloway. That's good.
My apologies. I put in front of my car keys.
No worries. And... I don't see any minutes to approve, so we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Oh, don't forget Jasmine.
Oh, I'm sorry. The student representative's report is what I meant to say. Future superintendent. Hi Jasmine, welcome.
I didn't have too much to report today. I know that at the high school, there's recently been a change with lunch seating, so there's been students a lot at the table now facing the same direction, which is definitely different. That takes a little bit of adjusting, but if that's what we have to do to get back to normal, then I guess everyone's willing to do so, especially because we don't have any other choice right now. I know that at school, just among other students, I've heard a little bit of concern regarding it. We're going to go back to remote for a little while with this recent COVID surge, I guess. So I know that that is something that a lot of people have been curious about, but our teachers obviously haven't said anything because I don't know if they know or not. So I guess all the buzz right now is just COVID, and I guess that's everywhere. But other than that, school's been going pretty smoothly. I think winter break was a great time to recharge, to get back to class, and just really rest from the first trimester, and it's been going good so far. I mean, we've only had one day back, obviously, because the district was off yesterday, which was a little strange, but I won't complain, seeing as I'm a senior and I don't have to take it up, so.
Good for you.
Excellent. Well, we'll see what we can do for you on Friday as well, Jasmine, and maybe a few more throughout the year. Yep, you deserve it. You've come a long way. Thank you for that report. Any comments for Jasmine?
Just always good to hear from her.
Yep, always nice to have you here, and yeah, you're right. We don't know exactly what's going on with COVID. We'll take it day by day and just do the best that we can for one another. So you can relay that on to your classmates that day to day.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a nice evening. Now we move on to the superintendent's report.
I have Mr. Chair. We have Ellie McGee.
Oh, Ellie's here? Oh, okay. I can't see that far away.
Hi, sorry. I took a couple minutes late.
Hi, Ellie.
I don't really have too much else to add besides what Jasmine said, but yeah, winter break was a nice break from school, and obviously there's been some COVID concerns coming back to school. Actually, I have COVID myself right now. But, um, yeah, it's been, it's been a rough couple weeks of COVID for the high school, but besides that, there are some exciting things coming up. I know sleep hope starts tomorrow for the first time this year, which is exciting because last year we didn't get to have that. And they're also hoping to do a Jake Keeskey trip in Marsh, assuming that everything does as well, and we can do that as well.
Excellent.
Other than that, I have too much to add.
Well, thank you for that report, Ellie, and I hope that you're on the mend and that you're feeling okay and you're back in action before too long.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, Ellie?
Just feel better.
Thank you.
Get well. We'll see you soon.
I have dinner.
Thanks. Same to you. And now we move on to the superintendent's report. The third time's the charm.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. COVID, obviously, is the topic right now du jour, as we heard from our student representatives. We've been back two days out of three. We reported 110 cases over the break on Monday. We were closed Tuesday, and I just want to make it clear to folks why. We are required by state law to have a nurse in each school building, and we have plenty of nurses on our roster, but a perfect storm hit, and some were ill, and some others could not make it in for valid reasons. And so we had no choice but to close our buildings, and so we do apologize for that, but I don't really know what else to say other than we're bound by law. We're also bound to make sure that our kids are safe first and foremost at all times. So I apologize for any inconvenience. We did try to get a notice out to folks as soon as we knew on Monday that that was going to be the case, and, you know, there's a very real possibility that that could happen again, you know, down the road. If you've been watching the news, other school districts have had to close schools completely because they haven't had adequate staff. So it's not just Auburn. It's everywhere, and so I appreciate people's patience. I appreciate the kind words that I did get from many folks. That certainly outnumbered the not-so-kind words, but we're doing the very best that we can. So as I said, 110 cases on Monday. We were closed Tuesday, and today we reported 61 cases. And, you know, that's common around the state. It's not anything that's new to Auburn, and that number is going to be high for a bit, and we hope that we see, you know, a decline in that number as we get, you know, through the middle and end of January, but time will tell. In the meantime, we'll do our best to weather the storm. Dr. Chamberlain sent me an interesting statistic today, kind of conversely, as we're talking about positive cases. We've recorded 4,758 negative tests in our schools through our test and stay program. So those are 4,758 days of school for students that have been saved because we have test and stay in place. So we're doing our very best, you know, to work through the situation, and we'll continue to do that. So I appreciate people's patience. I continue to appreciate their support, I think is all of us do here in the district. And at some point, it will get better. At some point, it will get better.
Don't steal my line.
At least that's what we keep telling ourselves.
Thank you for that.
Yes. Moving on. We have the second half of our budget this evening. Oops, sorry. It's not what I wanted to do. That's what I wanted to do. So prior to the break, let's set this number to the fifteenth. Excuse me for one second. Let me get to the appropriate slide. Alright, there we go. So prior to the break, as we had, as you and we had heard, we heard from our building principals who provided us with their school improvement plans. They talked a little bit about what they're doing, you know, in this return-to-school COVID year, and as we did last year, and we did again this year, we considered that kind of part one of our budget overview. This evening is second part. It's a little bit, well, I should say probably a lot shorter as we are getting into some of the bigger details. So as always, when we put together our budgets, they are based on our mission of strengthening connections through rigor relevance and relationships. They're based on our vision, which is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. And they're based on our core values: student-centered decision-making, all environments are safe and respectful, equitable opportunities for all students, high expectations for all, responding to needs based on data, and being dedicated to continuous improvement. And we're doing our very best to be mindful of improvement, as well as all the core values, even in this second unexpected year of COVID, but it's a challenge. Remember this picture? Yep, so do I. At some point, we're actually going to be able to probably get to the strategic plan and continue forward with it, but we probably maybe should have added a COVID section to the five areas up there back in eighteen, but we didn't really know that it was coming. In any event, the budget, as always, reflects the district's strategic plan adopted by the school committee in the spring of eighteen: teaching and learning, technology, health, wellness, and safety transitions, community partnerships. That's what our budget's always been built on, continues to be built on that. It's predicated on providing our children the very best educational opportunities possible. It's also predicated on maintaining high standards and achievement, which is something that our community values, but is also something that makes us a highly sought-after school system, and we want to continue to do that. Teaching and learning, in keeping with the expectations, we seek to keep our students under 25 in classes wherever possible. We're expecting those numbers to be in that area. There's obviously going to be situations where some classes are higher than that, especially at the secondary level, but we do our best to maintain 25 or lower where possible. In terms of technology, you know, we continue to fund through CIP, the operating budget, school choice, and grant funds. The budget continues to maintain a one-to-one iPad initiative, which we currently have in place, and we have expanded it. K to twelve, we have one-to-one device capability. We want to continue to develop our asynchronous and synchronous learning opportunities. If we ever get the opportunity to use them by the state, that would be great, and we continue to maintain our infrastructure in all of our buildings. We have been hampered a little bit by that this year with a lot of stuff sitting off the coast of California, but as it comes in, we are putting it in place. Professional development, our faculty and staff are committed to being lifelong learners and evolving with the changing nature of educational trends. We have funds included in this budget to support dynamic professional development, as we always do, and to not only have outside folks come in, but also to build in-house capacity to further knowledge and skills. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion work continues. That's the CLI, Center for Leadership and Educational Excellence. We continue to work on social-emotional learning initiatives, and we continue to work on our universal design for learning that you've heard Dr. Chamberlain speak about in meetings past. Student achievement, we're dedicated to continuous improvement of educational excellence for our students. We continue to promote preschool for our town's youngest children. That reduces and removes financial barriers. We're looking and continuing to develop academic, vocational, technical, and soft skills, PK to sixteen, for our post-day school success. We're continuing our beyond-the-school-day and beyond-the-school-year opportunities for students as possible, looking at enrichment acceleration and advanced programming options. And we continue to look at meeting the needs of our children in districts who no longer are with us in grade twelve but need programming from the ages of eighteen to twenty-two, such as our encore program. In terms of health, wellness, and safety, obviously, as I said at the outset, the safety of our students is paramount. Safety of our staff is paramount. In addition to our academics, we are supporting our emotional needs, as we've talked about, through our Bright programming, as well as other programs. We continue to have a strong and stable nursing corps within the APS, and we're proud of that. We provide ABA/IA support for students who have unique challenges and need additional supports to achieve at their highest levels. There are funds in the budget to keep the building safe and proactively responding to any potential threats. We provide our students safe co-curricular activities to promote physical and social health and wellness, and we're continuing to maintain our focus on providing healthy and nutritious meals to students and families. This is an interesting slide, and I only put it in because our free and reduced percentage by school has grown. We are as high as we've ever been in terms of percentages of free and reduced students. And why does that matter? Well, it matters because it's a fairly well-regarded fact that students that are part of our free and reduced lunch program sometimes have unique learning challenges that need to be met, and it requires additional resources than, you know, say, a child maybe not on free and reduced school lunch. So I put this up as a, just as a pause and a kind of a huh type of point because, as you can see there, the district average is thirty-one percent, and like I said, we're as high as we've ever been. Part of that, I'm sure, is COVID and people being out of work, but I also think, you know, it's just the changing nature of the demographics in town. So we have to be mindful of students' needs, you know, related to this category as well. In terms of transitions, you know, obviously, we, as you well know, we feel it's imperative that our kids adapt to new surroundings so they can feel safe and comfortable. You know, we have our introductions to new faces and places, PK to twelve. We have building transition activities to start the school year that were in person, which was nice. We didn't have that opportunity last year. We have our parents and caregivers were able to come in to help with the transitions this year, do a personal transition by administration, and of course, we continue to welcome new families into the district. And as Mrs. Williams could attest and Dr. Chamberlain can attest, we have quite a number of new families come into the Auburn Public Schools. Community partnerships, we continue to stand together. Again, you know, community partnerships are something that we value. Difficult, again, with COVID, but our families and our residents, Auburn Youth and Family, Auburn Chamber of Commerce, the Town of Auburn, governing boards, police and fire, the Department of Health and Inspection Services, Staples, have all been really instrumental in helping us getting back to full in-person, and so we thank them very much for that, and we're very hopeful that at some point we're going to be able to reciprocate, as we have done in the past. It's just incredibly difficult right now with COVID climate that we have. So moving forward into assumptions and projections for the FY23 budget. Mrs. Wisbicky, not to leave her out, Mr. Chair, we'll talk about the next two slides, where we talk about kind of what we know at this point relative to the FY23 budget and what we don't know.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Okay. First of all, the House, Chapter Seventy, for FY23 is unknown at this point. The town increase is also unknown. We also call those the cherry sheets. We won't, that's usually how the numbers come out in the state like the third week in January, so we're anxiously waiting those numbers to see how we're going to make out. New staff proposed for the budget, the music program. There's a portion of a salary in there to help with the strength program implementation. There's an ABA that will be for the preschool program for a child that is in need of one-to-one. We have two LPM one-to-one staff that are needed for children's or students' medical needs, one at the middle school and one at the high school, and assistant golf coaches, two of them, currently for one for fall and one for spring, because we have both leagues. And all the positions that I've mentioned just above are due to emerging needs of our students. So those are basically what's in this budget for new positions. All of our supply lines in the building are pretty much level funded. We have a few exceptions. Some of the custodial lines have increased to cover with the COVID cleanings and protocols that we try to keep our building safe and clean for our students and staff. So those lines have gone up, so those are basically some of the few. And also, there was a line, too, that we've added for continuing to replace our filters for the new filtration air, bipolar air ionization units. We need to replace those filters and the actual, I think it's a bulb. I'm not sure Mr. Bahe would have better response on that, but we have to do replacement on those machines. As of October first, accounts were used in our budgeting for students at each grade level to ensure consistent data was utilized, so we use the October first numbers of this year. We have level funded all the grant monies using the FY22 amounts for the 240 grant, the Title I grant, and the Title II grants is offset to reduce the impact to our operating budget. We've projected the Medicaid reimbursement to be $100,000 as adjusted and approved at the Fall Town meeting, while also using any of the carryover funds from previous years, if we have any available at the end of the year. Our special education circuit breaker reimbursement, we've conservatively budgeted it for sixty-five percent. That tends to vary with the state. It can go anywhere from sixty to seventy-five percent. We usually stay right around the sixty-five percent to be conservative for budgeting. We're going to continue to participate in the school choice program with the current seats of a hundred, but we will look at that as needed if there are changes that need to happen. Next, our instructional assistants, IAs, and applied behavioral analysis instructional assistants, the ABAs, have been noted in their current assignments in the budget, although movement is certain to occur to meet the individual needs of our students. As was the case in FY22, we have budgeted for eleven regular educational school buses, making the assumption that the same number of students will ride the bus as planned for this past year. Assumptions that the bus fee will continue as currently in place with the $100,000 amount of fees being collected being used as an offset to offset our increasing transportation costs. Continued use of all offsets from revolving accounts, including the building rentals, which are a little bit down right now with COVID. We haven't been renting as much, but we're trying to be conservative with our monies. Satellite and Galaxy accounts, as well as the preschool and the athletic revolving accounts. Next, our oil pricing per gallon. Usually at this time of year, we have a good basis or knowledge of what we're going to be paying for oil for next year. Currently, it's unknown. The district's working collaboration with the French River, and there has been an invitation to bid issued and is scheduled to be awarded on January thirteenth. So the price of heating oil continues to fluctuate, so it's kind of like very volatile right now. But it will most likely be right currently for FY22, we're at $1.70 per gallon, so we'll probably have a little bit of a higher price than that for next year. So I will keep you tuned on the next meeting, what we end up coming up with for that. We continue to use solar credits from the panels on our roof at the high school and the middle school, along with the credits received from the town solar project in Rutland to assist in the offsets for our electrical costs each year. And projected offsets in our budget this year are total $3,176,336.27 that are utilized to offset the budget. Five hundred and forty-five thousand, four forty, are ESER funds, which are a one-time source of funding for the district. So, you know, I would say in normal years, our offsets are a lot higher this year, but that's due to the ESER funds, and that will go away. There will be a funding cliff for that. So, so all in all, the draft budget requested for FY23 is $28,870,214.33. This reflects an increase of $881,673.88, and I thank you for your support.
You just, and it's not on the slide, but just as a point of comparison, last year, FY22 budget, we saw a 2.85 increase. This year, we're seeking...
Three point one five?
Three point one five. So we're trying to be fiscally responsible as always, but we're trying to meet, you know, the needs, you know, that we see that we need right now. And again, as, you know, Mrs. Wisbicky said, we don't have town numbers quite yet. We don't have state numbers quite yet. So, you know, who knows? This number, it's a draft. Everything in it is a draft and is definitely subject to change up or down based on what the numbers are as they come in in the next month, month and a half. But it's at least a starting point for us to, if you feel, because it is your budget, but it's at least a starting point for send to the town.
I would agree.
I've also included in your packet with that, there's an actual breakdown of the entire budget that reflects this $28 million amount. It's by individual schools and departments and the school departments, so that is there for your reflection as well. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Excuse me?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How do we get the numbers for the free and reduced meals if everything is free at the moment? It's covered through the state. Like, how do you get those numbers?
Hi, for the chair, there is, we do still do applications for free and reduced. It's done through the virtual gateway system, so students are certified. So even though everyone's free right now, there are, they still take in the information and where people are flagged for their income level, and so those people are definitely, you know, made to, we have definitely looked in our system as the actual free and reduced students. So that's basically where Mrs. King is the one that handles that. She works on that regularly, and they stay up with parents reaching out as needed, you know, having parents apply. There is still the application, but a lot of it's done virtually, on the virtual portal.
I figured buses, too, are a good way, but I mean, if a kid doesn't take the bus, then you kind of have no idea. But, alright, just curious. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I only have one comment. I noticed when we went over the budget a couple weeks ago, almost no one had any increases in their budget. So the extra money we're asking for is because of additional personnel that we've had to add and...
Correct.
Higher...
Correct.
Higher prices for things like oil and other things that are going to come our way?
Part of it, the biggest increase to our budget every year is always our personnel cost. And in this budget, we've reflected taking every position because we've negotiated all of our contracts for next, we have them in place for next year, so we know what those prices will be. The only bargaining group that we need to do is the food service department, which doesn't reflect in the operating budget. So we do know what the prices are going to cost for staff salary for next year, so we have moved those people up on the scales. So a lot of our cost of the budget increase was the personnel. It's like eighty-seven percent of our...
Yeah, it's like, yeah, eighty-seven to eighty-nine percent of the overall budget is salary.
And that would be negotiated, that was negotiated in the contracts?
Correct. Correct. So those are...
Previously, right?
A few new people, but...
Yeah, so through the chair, those are known numbers, so we have a pretty good handle. Last year was a little bit different because we were still negotiating three, or two contracts, or two bargaining groups. But as Mrs. Wisbicky said, we know what the numbers are with the bargaining groups. The cafeteria is, the cafeteria personnel, they are their own entity. They're a self-supporting group, so they will have no impact on this number. And through the chair, to your point, Mrs. Holloway, correct. You know, if there was something that was an emergent need in our buildings, we certainly would have brought it forward. But for us, we know the most important thing to have in front of our kids, right, is humans. And I will tell you that our iPad initiative helps us a lot with a lot of things. It's not the be-all and-all, but it definitely helps us with a lot of things, and we're very comfortable with this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or...
Comments or questions? I'm going to wait until you sit down again.
He's waiting.
You're mean.
Sorry. Alright, I would entertain a motion to accept that draft budget and forward it to town.
I'll make that motion to accept the draft budget and forward it to the town.
Can we just, we'll just read that out, just so we have the, have the evidence. The draft budget of FY23 is $28,870,214.33. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
It's a very lean budget, so, I mean, thank you for, it must have been tough, really, trying to...
Yeah, that's...
Yes.
As you said, we're not there yet, but yeah.
Yeah.
Through the chair, we're not there yet. Could be leaner, could be a little heavier. That will be, you know, discussions that we continue to have, you know, again, as numbers become more apparent to us. But I think, I think the best way to think about this is, as much as we people feel like we're getting back into the swing of things with COVID and things like that, and yes, we're still reporting a lot of COVID numbers and we're still dealing with it, and it's a... And it's a crisis in our buildings, I mean, there's no other way to say it. You know, financially, you know, we're still kind of recovering and and people also have to remember too. That we're still recovering from, you know, taking a hit of four hundred and, you know, nineteen thousand dollars, you know, in FY twenty-one. Where we didn't get that Student Opportunities Act money. So our our budget that we put forward tonight is is even that much less, which also is problematic, so. There's this, there's a lot of moving pieces to this and we did look very hard at this budget and and again, try to put forward. But what we need to get the job done, so we'll see where it goes.
So, I knew we'd get it back up there.
All of us in the leadership team, the one thing that we've worked really hard to is to maintain the level of staffing that we currently have with ours. Staff and to keep those going, and I know in a lot of other districts, staffing cuts are made and in Auburn, we always try to make sure that our. Staff, we maintain our staff levels for our student needs, so that was a big critical piece of the budget this year.
Thank you for those comments.
And we're keeping a lot of the special programs and fine arts where a lot of that's usually the first to get caught.
We're trying. And we're trying to do it without fees and, you know, there's a, there's a lot of things in 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 our budget here in Auburn that's very, that's unique. Uh, shouldn't be in schools, but it is unique, you know, there's many other districts, you know, face very steep fees. For participation in anything outside of the normal school day, be it athletics, fine arts, et cetera. You know, save a bus fee, in our district, we're very fortunate that that's, that's all that we have, you know, to. To have to, to have to lean on, so, and yes, and we're trying to keep all of our programs wholly intact. You know, to meet the needs of our kids, so, and give them variety and give them opportunity and give them the choices that they deserve. So, again.
And if I could add one thing, as long as I can remember, the bus fee has not changed.
That's correct.
It's been that since I was teaching, which is a long time ago now.
That's correct, we haven't seen a bus fee increase in in quite a number of years. So, we're really doing our best.
Well, all great commentary and I would just say that it's very seldom is the, does the the town. Question our our motives, our budgets, usually they work i- in a partnership with us to make sure that we have what we need, so. You know, I applaud them as well ahead of time, maybe risky to do so, but I am.
No, I, no, I, I don't think so, I.
No, especially, especially town meeting.
Town meeting is, town meeting has been wonderful to us historically, over the years. Town administration has been nothing but a pleasure to work with, very collaborative. And understand the importance of all budgets in town, but the school budget as well. And so we we expect that we will continue to have a very amicable discussion about how we get to a place we need to get to.
Yeah, I think that speaks to the the transparency, we're always willing to explain or 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 really, you know. Really point out what it is that we need, why we need it and 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 where we need it and I think that. I think the town understands that, there's nothing, nothing, no smoking mirrors here, so. With that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's four and stop in at home, was that an I?
That was an I, yes, can you guys hear me?
Yep, that's better, thank you. All right, it is a vote, unanimous. Thank you.
At daddy's house. Okay, now your dog then.
Someone's barking.
Yeah? We don't mind.
All right, moving on to new business.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, just quickly, we'd like to thank the Big Y Foods in Southbridge for hand sanitizer donation. Jeffrey Elaine, Sales Manager with Big Y Foods in Southbridge contacted our office to donate eighty cases of hand sanitizer to the district. Mr. Fahey graciously went out to retrieve them, which was two pallets worth of hand sanitizer and that will be distributed throughout the buildings, so. I would recommend you accept that with gratitude.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept the donation of hand sanitizer from Big Y Foods in Southbridge with gratitude.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you to to Big Y for moving that away and thank you to Mr. Jeffrey Elaine.
Yes, much appreciated, absolutely. Uh, before I turn it over to Dr. Chamberlain, finally, Esbit Valley Collaborative, which is a, which is, we are participating in. Their FY twenty-one annual report and audit report has been provided to you for your review, although it doesn't say it here. Um, I would, I would. Request that we have a motion to accept the annual report and audit report. Slipped by me, I apologize.
George, do we need to vote on the hand sanitizer?
Yeah, we'll go back to that one, Dr. Hanfield's jumping the gun on me.
I'm sorry, it's just like.
I deserve it.
I'm sorry.
It was, no, I did it to you at first, so.
I was ready to go, sorry.
Jumping out of that chair.
All in favor of that first motion, um.
Aye.
Aye.
Donation. Aye. It's unanimous, it is a vote. And now we'd entertain a motion to accept the Esbit Valley Collaborative Annual Report.
I'll make that motion to accept the Esbit Valley Collaborative Report for twenty-one, for fiscal year twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
All right.
Aye. It is a vote, unanimous once again.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we move on to teaching and learning. She wasn't going to go up until she was introduced.
I jumped the gun, that's correct, I waited my turn. So just a few things to share with you this evening, as we hope to speak, begin to speak more and more about other things beside COVID-nineties. Uh, so in the next few weeks, I've met with the district-wide mental health team. Who have been working to really revise how we're identifying social emotional issues that some of us students may be having. We had used an assessment previously called the BEST with mixed results. So with their input, we've identified the strengths and difficulties questionnaire that can be used with students ages five to seventeen. Um, it's to determine social emotional needs with emotional symptoms, conduct problems, hyperactivity and inattention. Peer relationship problems and pro-social behavior. Students over the age of eleven fill out the questionnaire themselves, obviously with parental consent. They would do that on an iPad, it's a quick questionnaire. And for younger children, it's a questionnaire that gets sent to the parents to fill out. So it's their reflection on how they feel about their child's behavior. And and again, it's all voluntary, they don't have to do it. This, we're going to start this screening with very small groups of students, we don't want to become overwhelmed with the results. We want to make sure that the results seem to be reflective of what we know of our students and that this tool is indeed a good one to help us. Identify kids in need of support. So this is fully supported by our guidance and social work team, they're excited to start it, again, they're going to pick small groups of kids. Consent will be got, will be received from parents before any children participate. Parents will be provided with a report afterward, as well as. What the interventions will be, right, because once we get this information, we want to make sure we provide the students with what they need, so. We're excited about the information that I'll give and we hope that long term, this is something that every year we're going to be able to do with every student. But we want to try it on a small basis first to make sure it is a tool that we feel is useful. Um, we've also undergone a lot of training on iReady for our K to five teachers. So iReady came to us, we had iReady previously, just for math. When the pandemic came along, they offered iReady for English Language Arts and Math at a very reduced price, right, a lot of the programs allowed that. Because we could use that for kids that were home during remote learning. We found it to be a very powerful tool, but with tools like that, you need a lot of training around how to use the data. And what the data means and how to use the program to respond to the data. So all the K to five grade level leaders and principals went through a two-hour training with how to do that. And they're going to spread the word with their grade level teams so that we can really be more targeted. With what we know our kids know, what they don't know, how to use the tool to fill in those gaps. As well as how to address those gaps in the classroom, right, because we know no, no program is going to fill all those gaps. But it will provide us with a lot of information, training was very well received. It was a very enthusiastic trainer, with sometimes with these programs, they were a little bit flat. He's very enthusiastic and the teachers really appreciated it, so that was a good one. Um, and on a a final note, just to let you all know that in early December, mid-December, the Auburn High School National Lana Society took a field trip. Which, remember when we used to talk about field trips?
Yeah.
What was unique about this one was it was a trip to Boston, but if you'll see, the number of lessons and content areas that the trip addressed. Where they were at the outdoor aquarium tank at the aquarium, focusing on seals and biology. The Mowgli courthouse, Mr. Canard did a lesson on government and court system, due process. Mr. Berg did a bit on climate change. There was a bit of work on skyscrapers with Mr. Canard, a photography lesson, lesson using their iPhone. They went to the site of the Boston massacre with a lesson on the massacre in Crispus Attucks. And again, the New England Holocaust Memorial, and Mrs. LeBonne, a lesson on the Holocaust and about the structure of the of the memorial, so. You know, right in our backyard, right, but there was a lot to come from that, it was really well received, the kids had a great day, so. Despite all of it, there are, there's a lot of good things happening related to teaching and learning, and I couldn't be prouder of the work our teachers do every day. Because it is yeoman's work, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for that report.
They managed to do all that outside too, for the most part, I would. Yeah, and a lot of it's free, if not all of it, right?
Excellent, and now we luckily move on to a second business and financial report.
Speaking again, back. First of all, I'd like to ask for acceptance of a memorial gift. Swanson Road staff had collected funds in memory of one of Auburn students, Gracie Bulger upon her passing. The funds were donated in order to purchase something to benefit the Auburn school community in her memory. And I just ask for your acceptance to establish a gift account in the memory of Gracie Bulger.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude the funds donated by the Swanson Road staff members in memory of Gracie Bulger. And establish a gift account to be used to purchase something for the Auburn school community in her memory.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I think that's a wonderful idea, very, very thoughtful.
So thank you very much.
All in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
Okay, in your packet, I provided a year-to-date budget report that was dated December twenty-second for your information. Along with that, I have budget transfers, a group of transfers between the safe series for your information. As well as a list of transfers between different series, which I'm seeking approval from you. And if you can answer any questions.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the list of transfers stated December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, as presented by the business manager.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Is that it, Dr. Hanfield?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that is all this evening, thank you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? All right, it is a vote.